Acting Mayor Sean Hyder is absent.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Pandalion.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Tack.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg is absent.
Alderman Palmer is absent.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Six, three, you have a quorum.
Okay, first order of business is approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2013 committee meeting. Any additions, deletions, comments? None being heard. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, item number three.
We need a "i."
"I."
Okay, sorry about that. Smooth. The next item is a report on the comprehensive Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan and Resident Guide presented by Chuck Myers, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Good evening, members of the council. I am here to give you a court with Peter Gordon is going to join me. He is the City Forester. I think most of you know him. I did want to mention a couple of other key people that were involved with the formation of this plan. I have myself on there, the Superintendent of Parks and Forestry. I do come from the Forest Preserve. For seventeen years, I worked on their EAB management plan and in their Forestry and Natural Resource Department. Peter Gordon has been the City Forester here twenty years. He's been with the city, been a certified arborist for about that same amount of time. Corey Wierma, I wanted to recognize him too. He was instrumental in getting the inventory done. He worked on that with a couple of other guys. He's Peter's assistant. Then also Davy Resource Group. We worked with them to put this plant, plan together. They've worked with many communities around the country doing this kind of thing, so we value their expertise in this. And then also, wanted to mention, we did bring this before, the Park and Rec Board a couple of weeks ago. They gave us some valuable feedback on it, and they have endorsed the, the plan that I'm going to present tonight. So with that, I did want to say quickly that we did send you a very large packet a couple of weeks ago. We recognize that there was a lot of material in there. We do hope that you get a chance to further review it. We recognize that it was probably too much to digest at one time. So tonight, we have a PowerPoint that will scale this down, and we're going to focus on some of the key components. We did give you a written copy of that. So at that, I'm going to hand it over to Peter. He's going to be talking about the resident guide.
Members of the council, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding Emerald Ash Bore. So real quickly, I wanted to give you an overview. In 2002, Emerald Ash Bore was found in Michigan. At that time, the urban forestry community was made aware of EAB and the devastating effects that it would have on communities such as Lake Forest. In 2009, we unfortunately found EAB here in Lake Forest, and that kind of began our grassroots energies to get the word out to the residents. We stopped planting ash trees ourselves on public property and in right of ways. We encouraged landscapers and developers to stop planting ash trees. And we kind of set the seed with the residents as well to let them know that EAB is a problem. So in 2009, we took advantage of a lot of the other media sources, Gazeebo News, Dialogue, the Trib Local, Lake Forester, and most recently, we were at the Home Health and Leisure Show to let the residents know about Emerald Ash Bore in the re-greening of Lake Forest. Tonight, we had the pleasure of meeting with you for the fourth consecutive year in a row to talk about EAB. Tomorrow, we're meeting with the Civic Unification Committee, and actually Wednesday, we'll be talking to the Rotary E2 about EAB. So our resident outreach program, we feel, has been relatively strong. We realize we have a lot more work to do. There's going to be a lot more hurdles ahead of us as we go forward. This plan that Chuck will be presenting tonight is a ten-year plan, and we certainly want the residents to know that we are there to support them every step of the way. Secondly, we've been applying for grants. We have two actually pending, and we hope in the next month, we'll hear the outcome of that. And as Chuck mentioned, the residential guide, which will be pared down. But more importantly, we put a lot of information in that residential guide, more so that you know that that information is out there, residents do too, and that we can make it available for them as well. So when it comes to residents and how they approach EAB, we really want to break it down into four steps. One is, we feel the residents need to identify the ash trees on their property. And we realize that residents aren't necessarily arborists, but they can work with certified arborists, or more importantly, they can work with city staff. Over the last three years, we've actually adjusted our hours to be available early in the morning and later in the afternoon, so that our schedules conform with a lot of their schedules, so we're available kind of as an unbiased opinion to help guide them in the right direction. And what we want them to get out of that initial meeting, either with the city or the certified arborist, is that there are some financial implications to this. People are going to be losing a lot of trees. It's going to change the aesthetics of their yard. It's going to have environmental impacts, such as more storm water, higher energy costs. And so we really want them to kind of remove the passion out of trees and take a step back and look at these trees and where they're going to be in the next five years. We want them to know that treatment is certainly an option, and we encourage treatment, and our plan also talks about treatment here. But not every tree is worth treating. So trees less, or trees that are declining more than forty percent are probably not recommended to be treated likewise. They probably should consider removal. But lastly, we really want to focus on the replanting of the community, bringing trees back into Lake Forest, trees that complement their landscapes, and more importantly, we want to promote diversity. With an ash tree population of nearly nineteen percent, a maple population of twenty-one percent, we really want to encourage residents to switch up their species. So with that said, we do have an ordinance that does cover infectious diseases and infestations. Most of you are aware of it with our work with Dutch Elm disease, where we tag trees on private and public property. EAB unfortunately is one of those public nuisances, and so the city does reserve the right to tag trees on public and private property. We notify the homeowners by mail of the fact that they either have a diseased tree or infested tree. Our ordinance requires them to remove the tree in thirty days, and there's also a penalty for non-compliance. We realize the magnitude of Emerald Ash Bore is a lot bigger than, excuse me, a lot bigger than Dutch Elm disease. And so what we're trying to do is actually tweak the ordinance, if you will. We want to go ahead and make sure that it doesn't impact the residents as much as maybe the Dutch Elm disease ordinance has in the past. So we really want to focus on trees in the front yard. We want to focus on trees that are hazardous, trees that may fall on the roadways, may hurt pedestrians, and trees that may take out utilities. So we're still going to tag trees for residents and for city that pose those threats. We will go ahead and send them a letter. We'll notify them and give them thirty days to remove. Where we've modified our intentions is when it comes to backyard trees. We realize that people could have anywhere from one to three hundred trees, and certainly that is something that nobody, I think, is financially ready for, emotionally ready for. And so we want to really send the residents a letter explaining to them that they do have EAB and encouraging them to remove their trees and make it strictly voluntary. We don't have the staff to actually tag all these trees, and we're not really sure that the residents are prepared to get a letter from the city notifying them they have well over a hundred trees in many cases. So in moving forward, we talked about the four categories, the treatment, the removal, and the replanting. And I want to assure the residents that the city is with them every step of the way. And we can provide information, again, as an unbiased source, but more importantly, we've looked at a number of options. When it comes to treatment, we have a product that we're making available to the residents at a wholesale cost. It's available on our Municipal Services Building, and it's about a $20 savings per bottle versus the retail cost. In addition to the fact, we are out to bid with the City of Lincolnshire for consortium pricing on insecticidal treatments, which would be two other products that are available on the market, and we feel that we can get the residents a lower cost and the city a lower cost by kind of doing consortium pricing. When it comes to tree removal, we have the ability to get consortium prices for city trees, but unfortunately, unfortunately, there's too many variables when it comes to residential trees. The bidders and the tree care companies aren't willing to provide a bid for tree removal sight unseen. Things like patios, decks, pools, fences, all those things play into removals, and so they don't feel comfortable giving kind of a flat bid. Where we can make some headway is with stump removal, we can get a price per diameter inch. That's pretty uniform. The machines can get in the back. There's not as many liabilities in doing something like that, so we feel we can really leverage the costs when it comes to stump removal. Our compost center, which many of you are familiar with, is certainly a benefit to the residents. In years past, the city didn't accept logs over six inches in diameter. We will now be accepting logs larger than six inches if they're ash with unlimited brush drop-off, and we'll continue the curbside pickup with our sanitation and forestry sections. For sanitation, brush needs to be bundled and have a city sticker on it. For the forestry sections, we offer a special pickup with a $40 minimum fee, which is equivalent to about two cubic yards, but we have no size requirements. It can be as long, as big, as a resident can get it to the curb. So that's something that we will continue to offer. Lastly, as we talked about replanting options, we really want to encourage residents to replant. You can see that we started our greening initiative with the Home Health and Leisure Show. I've provided you each with a tree that we are handing out kind of as a token gift to promote the replanting. We realize that not every resident can plant a tree in town, but we wanted to go ahead and try to get trees at a wholesale cost for residents, the one, one and a half inch category where residents can plant them, bring them home on their own, pick it up, and also offer workshops to go ahead and promote proper tree care health. In addition, we've had some contractors approach us in other communities, saying that they can get our residents two and a half to three inch trees that are bald and burlapped at fairly reasonable prices, $325 and $380 with one-year guarantee. Those trees are pretty significant size. And lastly, we also came up with the idea to provide nater bags for residents at a wholesale cost. Those are those green bags that you sometimes see around the trees. More importantly, that brings an awareness to the trees, but it really promotes water conservation, and we feel that that's really important as we start to re-green Lake Forest. And so those can also be available for residents. And then lastly, moving forward, the re-greening of Lake Forest. We have already engaged certain groups, such as Lake Forest Open Lands and the Forest Preserve, in conversations about that. We've reached out to some of the educational institutions and garden clubs, and we'll continue to do that through this whole process. But more importantly, we want to make sure that we can restore the character of Lake Forest, reduce our carbon footprint, reduce the energy costs in the storm runoff that goes along with trees. And so those are all important steps in how we plan on moving things forward. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Chuck.
Thanks, Peter. All right, moving into the plan itself. I wanted to start by talking a little bit about the street tree inventory. As we came to you last year, we did use numbers from an old inventory that was done in 1997. And it was good, good to have numbers to work with, to generate some numbers, but we did emphasize the need for a current inventory. So over the summer, we were able to contract out a portion of the inventory, and then we finished it in-house early this year. That enabled us to move forward with the numbers that you see tonight, and it was a key thing in getting us to put together this plan. The, I would also want to point out that the numbers that we used for November CIP input was based on those old figures with the ninety-seven inventory. Some of the key findings from the new inventory, we did inventory 23,420 street trees, and I do want to emphasize that this plan is looking at street trees. We're not talking about some of the additional trees that residents have or on other public properties. For this discussion, it is the street trees. So of those 23,000 trees, we found that nineteen percent were ash, and of those ash, sixty-three percent were in good or fair condition, thirty-four percent were in poor condition, and three percent of those ash were either dead or critical. So we are, would I actually mention too, that even in the few months since we put the inventory together, as we're going back out, we're seeing some of the trees that were rated as fair have already been downgraded to poor condition. So things are happening rather quickly with EAB. Future plans with the inventory, we do recognize and we are committed to keeping the inventory updated annually. We also want to expand the inventory to include parks, the golf course, the cemetery, other public areas. We do recognize that there are a lot more trees out there on public properties, another place that you'll find a lot of ash along the bike trails, and there are public safety concerns there. So we are wanting to get out there and inventory those. We'll probably use a less timely method, I should say, a quicker method to get it done on those, so that we can get to managing those sites as well. I also want to mention that Lake Forest College is also interested in helping with inventory in our parks and some of our public areas. So we're looking forward to working with them on that. So we basically looked at four different management strategies for dealing with EAB. The first strategy that I want to talk about is basically doing nothing. It is a very reactive approach. It's waiting for things to become a problem, and then we would react to that. The advantages, initially, it's low cost, and we would retain some smaller trees longer. And that's compared to some of the other options. Some of the disadvantages, obviously, that, that could lead to being a high risk to public safety, and eventually, the costs are going to be higher with that type of a plan, because we're not, as staff, going to be able to handle it when things are really starting to fall apart. So we would have to rely on outsourcing a lot of that. So again, it's a reactive rather than proactive approach. I should say too, that some communities have tried to do that, some that were early in the EAB battle, and many of them are regretting that approach, because they have a lot of dead standing trees right now, and they can't keep up. So strategy two is a remove and replace all ash trees. So the advantages of that would be that it would reduce public safety risk, because we're getting rid of the problem all at once, and we wouldn't have any treatment costs. Some of the disadvantages, very high initial costs, obviously, it would have to be contractual. Also, we couldn't do all those removals ourself. And the immediate loss of tree benefits. Peter talked about it at the end of his presentation, some of those eco-services that trees provide, pollution reduction, energy savings, all of those kinds of, like storm water reduction, you're going to have an immediate loss in those services. And also, community character. It would be fairly devastating, I think, to lose almost twenty percent of our street tree population that quickly. So we would lose all of that, that it gives, the character that it gives to this community. And also, with that would come an immediate, significant capital expense. The third strategy is to treat all of the ash trees with chemical to protect them. The advantages, it would keep pace with safety concerns. It would preserve the ash population for a time. We would continue to lose trees even with treatment. Treatment isn't 100 percent. You would still lose trees. We would retain many of the benefits for that period of time, and we would reduce the annual loss of trees. And there would be still some removals, but fewer with this method. The disadvantages, it would be a high annual cost. It would cost approximately $250,000 per year to do this contractually. And again, we wouldn't have the staff to do this kind of activity for all the ash trees. And that cost would keep going on. That's a very important thing to consider, is that, that $250,000 could potentially go on forever. So there will still be removals in that kind of a scenario. We'll still lose trees, some of the trees that are infested now, we would have to remove those. They're probably too far along for treatment. So the fourth strategy is a combination of treatment, removal, and replacements. It's an integrated approach. It, the advantages, is that it keeps pace with safety concerns, it does retain the community character, and it stabilizes removals. And it's an approach that many communities are using, that, that idea that you're mitigating the losses of trees by staggering the removals and using treatment to extend the life of ash trees. It also will prolong the benefits of the highest quality trees that we have, the highest quality ash trees that we have. And then it will spread out the cost over the next few years. The disadvantages are that there would be the eventual removal of treated trees. There are approximately 1,249 trees in the plan that would be treated for about five years with the intention of taking them down eventually. That comes at the cost of about $400,000 for that treatment. Again, this is mitigating the losses. This is something that some of the bigger cities around here are doing, like Chicago and Milwaukee both, a number of other communities. When you see that on the news, that they're treating ash trees, doesn't necessarily mean they're trying to keep these trees forever. In most cases, and in talking to Davy, they've reaffirmed this, most cases, they're doing it to mitigate the losses over a period of time, so that they can take the trees out on their time, rather than take them all out at once. So also, another disadvantage is that this strategy would take place over a longer timeframe. That's, I list that as a disadvantage. It's actually an advantage if you look at tree benefits, because you want to keep those benefits going as long as you can, until you have the next generation of trees going. So based on a thorough review of these options, and looking at all these advantages and disadvantages, staff is strongly recommending the, the fourth strategy. Davy Resource Group, who's involved in a lot of these projects, also recommends this strategy. They've seen it being effectively used in a number of communities. A few things on the, on the recommendation. This is now a ten-year plan. As you recall, we originally set out to make it a five-year plan due to the high costs and the recommendation last year by city council and the park board. We, we went with a ten-year plan to spread things out. It is a dynamic plan. I would emphasize that we're dealing with a living organism. Things change. We will be evaluating this plan on a regular basis. This will take place annually at least. It's constantly being looked at, because things are going to change out there. We are also recommending the immediate removal of dead and critical ash. I guess I shouldn't say recommending. We're actually doing that now. That's not something we can wait on. We're actually doing that over the next couple of months, and we've done some already. And then the next, next thing that we're recommending is, through this strategy, is the removal of all ash trees less than ten inches in diameter, whether they're healthy, infested, or not. Those trees are very cost, they cost less to take down. We can take a lot of those down in-house, and also, at the same time, they don't provide as many of those ecosystem benefits or any of those benefits. So we, we feel that it is better to take these trees out with the low cost of removal on small trees and start over with new trees. We look at that as an opportunity to promote diversity in our street trees. We will continue to treat some ash trees. We've already been treating trees over the years. We'll continue with that. We need to mesh that into this plan. We need to work it in. So next point is that we want to make sure that we're replacing every tree, every ash tree, with another tree. Diverse species list has been generated, and we're, we want to shoot for 408, and that represents, obviously, we're taking out 4,082 ash trees total over the next ten years. That represents over ten years, that's 10%, so 408. And four, 379 trees would remain in total. The, a little bit on the CIP. As I said before, we presented these numbers. This was our request for CIP for fiscal year fourteen, based on the last inventory from ninety-seven. As you can see, the number that was needed for this plan is 392,000, a huge deficit that I'll talk about in a moment, but I just wanted to let you know that we, we are working to bring that down, and we, we believe that there's ways that we can get it down. So another important thing to keep in mind, when you look at that big spreadsheet in the plan that has all these costs, that is based on outsourcing prices. We don't plan on doing this all by contract, so we think that we can save a lot of money in that. Most of the removals that they list contractually, the cost would be very high. We'd be using prevailing wages. It would be a lot more. In-house, we can take down the trees a lot cheaper. We are, we do believe that we can work within the requested amount, that $200,000 that we asked for with the CIP, and that through staff efforts, like removals, we can do some treatments on our own, we'll be able to save over $100,000 from the plan. The remaining 92,800, or I'm sorry, 92,895,000 would be mitigated through consortium pricing, which we're working on currently. Also, grant opportunities. Peter mentioned a couple. There's also more grant opportunities out there, obviously. But also, through plan reevaluation annually. At the end of this year, we will be taking a very close look at the numbers again. We want to see how far we get with the plan throughout the year, reevaluate it, and we would come back to you for the 2015 CIP with new and better numbers. So we, we feel that the 200,000 is adequate for this year. So our recommendation is that city council endorse the plan, and endorse strategy four, that is, and that's the combination of treatment, removal, and replacement over a ten-year period, and recommends that the $200,000 in the fiscal year fourteen capital improvement program remain the same. We do value your input on this. We do want to emphasize that this is still in the draft form. We are going to be making a number of, of changes on it, some smaller things that we've noticed, some of the things that the park board brought to our attention. We are very open to any discussion on this. So at that, I'd ask Peter to join me, and we'll take any questions that you have.
I have a question about the, the treatment. What's the collateral damage that results from not just the city treating trees? And if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the treatments are basically putting this larvicide or whatever it is at the base of the trees, and presumably, some of that gets absorbed into groundwater and gets distributed into the lake. So the city's going to do a certain amount of this, then if private citizens decide to try and save their trees, and they start dumping this stuff at the base of trees, what's the... the potential collateral damage of that?
Well, amitocloprid is the one that's used as a soil drench. That product is used for a lot of different things. As a matter of fact, even the flea stuff that you put on your dogs, that's amitocloprid. It is a chemical that is commonly used for other boars and oaks and other kinds of trees. It has been studied pretty heavily. We have looked at all that. The reason why we would like to use amitocloprid, it is a much less expensive chemical option. We can apply it ourselves. However, in the plan, it was actually showing the use of triage, which is injected into trees. There's no chemical hitting the ground. It's going directly into the tree and being sucked up. That one lasts for two years and it's more effective than amitocloprid. So the effect on other species or on other environmental factors, it hasn't been shown to be a problem. I mean, with, obviously, we don't want to use chemical any more than we have to, but it is very, the drench is put into the ground right at the base of the tree. And it's important that it be done that way. There are other methods that they use, a basal drench where you actually spray the base of the tree. We are not recommending that. We don't think that it's effective, but it's probably not the best way in case people are touching it and things like that. So I don't know if it helps.
Well, again, I don't know that that really answered the question either. I mean, I get your point that it's used a lot. The question is, is it used in this kind of volume? And if, since we don't really know, you know, we've got all these trees on private property that sooner or later people are going to have to decide what to do with and presumably they're not going to want to chop them all down immediately. So you're going to have thousands of people treating trees and dumping this stuff in the ground. So I just wonder, is there anything that looks at the effect of this in large volume use? You know, an effect on groundwater or streams or for that matter, the lake? If we don't know, we don't know, then we just say, hey, you know, we're doing something where we really don't know what the effects of large volume use are.
Yeah, and I'll let Peter jump in here, but it is used pretty heavily out there. We wouldn't be the first to use it on this level by any means, but I understand your concerns.
I think to answer your question, the product does have a recommended application rate per acre. And so it's very hard to gauge what an individual homeowner is doing, not knowing the products that their arborists are using. So from a city standpoint, we can certainly follow the recommendations based on the label requirements and make sure we follow within that guideline. But it's very hard to know what each individual homeowner is doing. So that's where, to answer your question, we don't know what that exact number is. The product does have a recommended rate per acre. And so we can't tell you that this product is becoming less effective as emerald ash borer is becoming more prevalent in town. So we really think that the arborist will probably abstain from using it and really push more of the triage which is injected into the tree.
What's the cost differential between the two?
Approximately $4.50 an inch compared to 23 cents an inch.
Not likely to get too many people in check.
The triage is good for two years. Amitocloprid is just a year. But I hope that answers your question. Yes?
I'm glad you brought that up because I wrote chemicals in big letters here. And I think Randy was looking at a more macroscopic perspective, what are the downstream effects? There are more dogs getting cancers and you have to wonder if it's because they walk on the soils, which we try and beautify with all sorts of chemicals and herbicides and fertilizers. And I just think maybe philosophically as a city, we should think about no chemicals. You mentioned the dogs. Frontline, we're all putting it on our dogs. There are more dogs getting cancers today than ever before at young ages. So if there's a way to do this, strategy four is fine with me, but I'd love to eliminate the chemicals. So let me just ask you, and not only to the dogs that are going to get close to a tree for obvious reasons and get their paws in it. But, you know, children are lower to the ground than adults in inhaling the vapors or the air that's closer to the ground. But what about our own staff who's doing the applications? I just think we ought to seriously give thought to trying to eliminate chemicals whenever we can. So you've got 50,000 for tree removal for this fiscal year and 50,000 for chemical treatment. If we took the 50 out of chemical and added it to the removal, will we be able to keep up with this avalanche of VAB?
We, I can't say for certain. My opinion would be that it is possible to be more aggressive on the removals, without a doubt. And this plan, I agree with you on the chemical and I'd rather not use it as well. It's a means of using chemical for a limited period of time. We could reduce the amount of chemical, the trees that we treat with chemical drastically. And we could, we're taking a little bit more chance is what it amounts to. You're raising the risk a little higher, but I can't predict with certainty when a tree is going to fail. We are seeing that exponential growth in the loss of ash trees. So it is a little bit more risk, but it, you know, chemical's a risk too. So to your point, I would say that we could back off on that. We could scale it back and look at doing less treatment and more removals.
Chuck, let me follow up though on Alderman's question, which I don't think you addressed. What is the cost of treating a tree versus what is the cost of removal of a tree? Are they one for one?
Well, I can tell you that the cost to remove all the trees.
Nope, let's start with one.
$141.
For, yeah.
Based on 3,183 trees, if we try to save 1,249, but with only 379 remaining, I've got some math questions for you later. But if it's $141 or $200 to treat them, or $2,000 to treat them if we use the other one, just keeping track of the numbers.
Yeah, okay. So if it's $240 to treat a tree, what is the cost of removing a tree?
It depends on the size of.
On average, $141.
Yeah, on average. If you look at the big picture, it might give you a glimpse of what you're looking for too, is if you look at strategy three, which is removing all trees, if you use that strategy, removal of all ash trees would be 1,373,000. And then you would have to add to that the request of replacement. So it is.
Then my numbers are wrong.
It is higher to remove.
But it's a lot less than the $4 million over 10 years.
Yeah, now, if you went with strategy three and you just said, we don't want to use any chemicals, we're going to aggressively remove as many ash trees as we can over the next few years and replace them, the whole plan would cost substantially more, probably closer to $4 million.
Can I ask some questions on numbers? On this, on the form with the blue box with the CIP numbers and the street plan total? You know, we got this five-year plan with the recommendation to make it a 10-year plan. So is this taking these numbers and doing it half as much over twice as long a period or duplicating this, doubling the numbers?
Well, actually, the CIP is only a five-year plan. You know that, but that was what we put together. What happened?
So are we taking that dollar?
You press the wrong button.
Oh, there you go. Thanks.
Are we taking that and stretching it over 10 years?
No, no.
Or just doing it again?
No. The plan on the bottom, the street tree plan, the one that you have the big spreadsheet for, that's totally independent of the top there. Those are just the numbers that we put together. The top is all the numbers that we put together on the old inventory.
This is the only spreadsheet I got unless I'm missing something.
It was in the appendix. It was a very large spreadsheet. It's in the packet.
Yeah, not in my.
I didn't bring a copy of it. It's too many numbers, but it was done independently. That's what we worked with Davey on. We took all of the removals, treatments, and replacement, put it in a big spreadsheet.
Just to try and understand some numbers, right? So we didn't get the spreadsheet. So the CIP total.
The answer to your question is yes. This is the first five years of the 10-year program.
Of a 10-year plan, so all these numbers are half.
That's right. Because under the Davey plan, which was in the packet, the 10-year, their 10-year proposal would be $3.3 million. So you basically take, not quite double this, but it's basically, because the numbers drop off in the later years because you have fewer trees to remove.
And I can give you some of those numbers. Initially this year, $392,000. Next year, 421.
Those numbers we have, right?
Yeah, and those are, but 421,000 goes up because we're doing more treatment next year and more removals. And as Mr. Kylie said, toward the end of the 10-year, it goes down to about 203,000.
Right. What you don't have on here, because this corresponds to the city's five-year capital improvement plan.
Right.
If you look at the Davey 10-year plan, years 20 through 23, basically, those numbers drop off slightly, but they're fairly duplicative and therefore that's where you come up with the full 3.3 rather than the 1.9 that's on the sheet up there.
Just in a nutshell then, I think before we follow your recommendation of a 10-year plan, which might have logic, we should see it, the 10-year plan. Because right now we have half of it to approve. I wouldn't want to approve a 10-year plan seeing five years.
Well, what we're looking at, now, we do want.
So we have the 10-year plan that we're not going to use and a recommendation to do a 10-year plan that we do want to use, but we've only got half the numbers to look at.
We do want to.
Or am I missing something?
No, I think if I'm not mistaken, we did get the 10-year plan in the packet. It was in a very long document, as I recall.
Page 13.
Yeah, I read it.
That's right. We'll make copies.
Page 13 of which one? This one? I have. Right. Mine goes to page six.
Alderman, she's making copies.
Okay, very good.
I don't know that I realized I had that either.
It's a very large EAB plan document. It was put in your box a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so would it be under city council, general? No.
Oh, yeah. Is it under committee of the whole?
Which one is in it? City council, committee of the whole, executive session, finance or general, maybe general. Okay.
So we sent that out.
Two weeks ago.
Right, with all the detail.
Appendix E.
Computers.
Sorry.
They're great. You gotta know what's in them.
Mine's only, mine's not here anyway because it's only a two-pager. So even on that one, it's not here. See?
That's the memo. It should be the attachment. Do you have the attachment?
That's right.
Where would the attachment be on this?
Remember you and I talked about this?
Yeah, well, it was actually the week before that, two weeks before that. So it was mid-February.
This is my Dropbox.
I think the, it is a 10-year plan. What we're presenting is a 10-year plan. What's up on the screen here, if you ignore the fiscal year 15 on, those are numbers that we put in in the past because we didn't have revised numbers from this plan. So I would.
Oh, it doesn't even say EAB in the title.
No, it doesn't say EAB in the title.
Okay.
It's, the title's long and so it's cut it off.
And that was in.
So there's a whole bunch of information that some of us haven't seen.
I have not even seen it, sorry.
So we apologize because we sent that out hoping to give you.
You did such a great job giving us a head start.
We're saving a lot of paper, but we couldn't find the.
You could get through a warrant piece faster than what was sent out.
It looks beautiful.
Thank you so much.
Chuck, what's the high risk to public safety?
Ash trees, when they start to decline and die, they get brittle very quickly. Unlike some of the other trees you see out there, elms and things, they will hold their branches for quite a while. Ash trees are classic brittle trees. When they start to die, they get brittle and branches break off.
In like a year?
Well, after you start seeing serious signs, when it's dead, yeah. Within just a short time, perhaps within a year, you can start to see brittle branches coming off. Obviously sidewalks, houses, roads, all big concern there.
So what if we just watched the trees, inventoried them every year, and when we saw they were starting to die, boom, we snatch them out of the ground?
I had green ones last year. They had branches falling off and the bark's peeling off in a year.
It's quick, yeah.
It's unbelievable. They had branched last year.
Big branches?
Yeah, they're falling apart in my yard. I can't believe it.
Exactly what we see, what you just described is that first strategy, that where I say doing nothing initially and it's waiting for things to go bad. That will increase the cost though because then we're being reactive and I think, you know, with many things, if you wait for it to happen, you pay the price eventually and then some.
Chuck, I've got just numbers questions again. I know I just got this and I apologize and I, or I had it but didn't know it. Normally when we would approve a plan like this, there'd be a number of trees with a cost to protect, trees over a certain inch and a total at the end. And we would have the opportunity to see if treating trees made sense or if cutting them down made more sense. But this says, we've got the Davey one, which I will look through when I get home and I apologize for not being prepared for that. But the other one is that we can save a lot of money and do it for $200,000. And I just don't know, if we're treating 1,249 trees, but we're only going to keep 379, does that mean that we're treating some so that we don't cut them down right away?
Correct.
But if that's 250,000 over five years, and now I can't find my old numbers, that means there would be 500,000 over 10 years?
We are actually treating more than 1,259. This might help. This is in the plan. I'm not going to, a lot of numbers there. It's basically showing you the size classes and the condition, just to go through the colors. This group represents, this is the 10-year plan too. So this is over the course of 10 years. These are the trees that would be removed. That's all of those inch to 10-inch. All of those in that first column are going to be removed. And then you can see that all the poor, critical, and dead are going to be removed. This represents that 1,259 is the number of trees that we're protecting temporarily. That's for five years until we decide to take them down. And then finally, these are the last trees on the chart. These are the ones that would be treated forever, potentially.
So the 1,259, we're going to spend roughly a quarter million dollars on so that we don't have to cut them down.
$400,000, yep.
In the next five years. This is the kind of stuff that I, I don't want to speak for anybody else here, but this is the kind of stuff I think we would want to know about because I would have a problem with that. Just from a financial standpoint.
The plan that you received a couple of weeks ago does show that, as a matter of fact.
And I just found it, I apologize.
And so let me just kind of, I guess, give you the Cliff Notes of it, if you will. Over 10 years, it's almost a million dollars to treat. We recognize that's a lot of money and as a matter of fact, the park board brought that to our attention as well. And the real question to you guys is if you feel that is a high number, and Chuck and I agree to some point that is a high number, and we decide not to treat, we lose those environmental benefits and the community character right away. And so that's a price that we have to put on that. And we can't tell you if that's worth it or not. We can tell you that it mitigates the losses over a number of years. We can tell you that in 10 years, there may be new treatments that are available. We could maybe save more than 379 trees. And so you bring up a really good point that it is a lot of money to treat these trees for a 10-year period. But it also is a lot of trees.
A five-year period, right?
Well, I think what you were focusing on is the CIP, and our CIP is only five years out. And so this plan is 10 years out. And so the plan that we've provided you shows the class of trees.
But Chuck just said those would be treated for five years and then removed. And the ones that are outlined now would be kept for 10, forever.
Well, all of these trees do continue to be treated into the sixth, seventh, eighth, forever.
Right, but the 1,259.
In the first five years, you're right. We do spend a lot of money on treatment.
What's happening with the 1,259?
The 1,259.
Being treated for how many years?
Approximately five years. Obviously, it could be anywhere from four to six, actually.
Peter just said 10, right?
Well, the.
I'm just.
Yeah, I got you. The treatment.
I'm trying to follow it.
There's two different categories of treatment, just to clarify. One is to treat trees forevermore.
Got that, yeah.
Then the other segment is that 1,249. So that group is what he's talking about. They are, well, the whole group is what he's talking about. We'll continue to treat into future years beyond the five. After five or six years, we'll be done with that 1,259, those 1,259 trees. We'll start to replace those. So that money does just go away. The treatment costs are lost, but I would say that this is being done in most communities around here. It's pretty readily.
So those are going to be kept alive for five years and in the fifth year, they all get chopped down or they die, or they cut them down a little bit as we go or?
No, that's where that reevaluation of the plan comes in. As we're able to take them out, we will. It wouldn't be all in one year. This would be over the course of a couple of years. Chemical treatment's good for two years. You can stagger the losses at that point.
I'd like to make a point. Number one, we're probably going to run out of time on this issue without everybody having a good enough understanding of it. And I think originally the idea was to get us to weigh in on support. And I think originally, the idea was to get us to weigh in on supporting the concept of, of the plan, not necessarily the economics of it. Am I correct?
Yeah, what's going to happen, thank you. This evening, we really wanted to talk about the Davy inventory plan and the plan that's been presented here for the 10-year plan that was reviewed by the Park and Rec Board and forwarded on to you with a recommendation. What we, I think we're really hoping to gauge is, were we moving too fast, too slow? I think the input we heard this evening about chemical usage and so forth is very useful, because if the city council says, as a policy, we do not want to use chemicals, then obviously the staff has to go back and come back to you with, okay, well, here's what that cost will be. And I think to Alderman Moore's point, it does seem like it's costing an awful lot to spend a million dollars over 10 years to treat some of these. But the practical matter is, we couldn't remove all of these in-house, so now you're going to pay a premium. So it's almost like you pay me now, or you pay me later. You're going to pay an extra, you're going to pay roughly the same thing over that 10-year period of time, whether you take them all down now, or you take them down-
Seven times more if we treat them and then cut them down.
And here's the thing, too, if I can comment real quick. If you look at the matrix here, depending on the size of the tree, treatment versus removal, the treatment costs anywhere from half to a little bit less than half of the removal. And for every tree you treat, you're ultimately going to remove it presumably, unless you treat it in perpetuity. So you're paying one and a half times to treat it and then remove it later.
And Peter said they're all going to die.
Yeah, yeah. Ultimately, they're all gonzo, so. And I understand everybody thinks by contracting it out in order to keep up with the avalanche, it's going to cost us more, but maybe not. You know, maybe there are some hungry tree removal guys out there who-
They're not going to be hungry for long.
Well, if we are the first ones to start feeding them, maybe we could get some pretty good deals.
Well, we can certainly, and that was, Alderman, to your point, that's part of what we needed to hear back, because we can come back and show you, okay, you want to remove all the trees in three years? You can do that. You know, the other part of the component that I think Peter and Chuck have been talking about is, what is that timeframe to replace? Because it's one thing to remove them, but then how long are we going to leave that gap, if you will, before we then come back and replace? So there are definitely some economic issues here about, that have to be discussed and determined by the city council. We have currently in the capital improvement budget, you will see here in about two weeks, we have just the $200,000. If you wanted to up that to, say, $500,000, then we either have to cut 300,000 out of some other, you know, road sewers, some other component, or you then start dipping into the reserves. Or then we have to have a conversation about, do we go out and issue debt to do something like this? We had not planned on issuing any debt in 2013, but we could certainly bring that discussion back to the city council as well.
I've actually got a couple of completely different issues that I wanted to, if I can, if I could take the last three minutes to put a couple of more things on the table. First of all, there's absolutely no attention here, other than an inventory of Forest Park, as far as I can tell, to all the trees that the city's responsible for that are not in the streets. I mean, we've got street, we've got trees in parks, we've got trees in all, you know, and there, some of them are in the woods, and they could fall down, and nothing would be, you know, it wouldn't be a problem. But others are in proximity to baseball fields and other places where, you know, I just think there needs to be, there's a whole nother level of cost there that we haven't even talked about here yet. And I just, you know, other than, and maybe I missed something, but all I saw was, they counted 29 trees in Forest Park. That's just one park. There's everything along the lake, you know, along the lakefront, along the boat base. I mean, there's all kinds of places where people are frequently standing around, where if these trees start to fall down, it's a problem. So, I mean, that, to me, that, that, I have no idea whether that's a bigger issue, a smaller issue, an equal issue, but it's something we're going to have to pay for. The second area of concern that I have is, and there's some discussion here, but I couldn't quite, in the couple of minutes, I'm unfortunately, like Alderman Moore, I didn't really realize we had this big document. But in terms of educating the public as a consumer, I mean, you know, I don't know how many of us remember the big hailstorm, but from whatever it was, 1998. But, you know, we had guys coming in here from all over the country, replacing roofs. You know, they'd knock on your door, and they'd say, hey, I can replace your roof, just give me your insurance company number, and, you know, these guys would sometimes do the job well, sometimes not, but a lot of the time, they were gone in two weeks when, you know, the money ran out from the insurance companies. And this is, this, all over this area, I mean, this stuff is going to happen. Guys with chainsaws and trucks are going to show up, and the homeowners are going to be clueless. And it's not easy. I mean, Peter, you were generous enough to come over to my yard last year around this time, and we walked around for an hour and looked at all the trees. But, you know, absent a marker, a marking system of some sort, you know, I don't have a plan. So, and I don't know whether I should be taking them all out. I mean, the same exact issues we're dealing with here for the city are issues on every single homeowner's lot in this town. And I'm really concerned about providing some sort of licensing system or authorization system. I mean, we don't let people go door-to-door in Lake Forest without having credentials. I don't want guys with chainsaws running around Lake Forest without credentials.
Well-
And I just think that's another angle here that we need to, and I know you've, you've thought about that, but I, I think we need to give a lot more thought to it.
Sure. I just want to let you know, we do have a licensing system for landscapers and arborists. And in the packet, we did identify at least seven accredited companies. Can't guarantee the quality of their work or their price, but we certainly are sympathetic to that and the-
And I saw that online, too, right?
I'm sorry?
Is that list online?
The list of licensed landscapers is online. Yes, it is.
That's all well and good, but I think that having some sort of guidebook or something for the, for the people who live in town as consumers, with the benefit of the city's knowledge, would be extremely helpful. Because even the most, you know, reputable contractors, when, when they have an opportunity to do more work than might necessarily be required, will sometimes take that opportunity. And I just, I just think it's, I know, just my own personal feelings, I'm, I'm just with my own little piece of property, I'm sort of baffled by this whole thing. And I can only imagine, you know, what a lot of other people don't even know there's a problem. I mean, probably two-thirds of the community don't even realize that there's an issue here, that they're going to have to deal with in, in short order.
Building on that thought, and it's a concern I have just for city and management, again, we have ordinances to protect trees in the city. When we're taking out trees for the ash trees, I'm assuming the residents have to contact the city for removal to see if they're eligible. Yeah, I mean, there has to be some system. Certainly, it's going to tax the manpower for the city if we're going to remove, yeah, thousands of trees in one year. There has to be some management plan. So, I mean, there's a practical effect from management's standpoint. Not that residents are going to want to remove non-ash trees or sneak them in, but we have to kind of monitor what's going on. It's difficult at best. The other thoughts are, I mean, we have to reevaluate this almost on a yearly basis. The bugs aren't going to come in single file line, they're going to come in plumes, obviously, and be greater on the top end, and then as the trees disappear, lessen towards the end of the 10-year plan. So it's, it's not going to be 10 years where it's all even. Probably in about two, three years, we're going to see the, the bulk of the bugs come through. And there's variables, do bugs become resistant to what we have now, are superchemicals going to be present? It's going to be evolving. But we also have a city budget that also is evolving. The economy does control this, unfortunately. We only have so much money to spend. It seems like what's put forth right now is a practical way to handle this, but we are going to have to refine this as time goes on. I'm supportive of what we're doing. It seems to make sense. The question I had in a more general sense is, are we identifying certain heritage ash trees that we want to save for a while? I'm sure that you've been doing that, but again, this is an evolving plan that all these thoughts are part of. And I agree with George, it's frightening from a resident's standpoint, because on certain residents, it's going to have a huge financial impact. And some of the residents aren't going to have the ability to pay a contractor to come out to remove five, 10 ash trees from their yard. It's just not in the resident's budget. So, again, this is going to be something that's going to be omnipresent. We're going to be dealing with this for a long time. I think all the thoughts are valid.
Do we ask for public comments on the issue at all? At the Committee of the Hall, or no?
After this is over. After we either decide to, to recommend. I have a hard time endorsing the plan without understanding what the costs are. I know that you can do it for $200,000, and there's a lot of numbers up there, but I have no idea what it costs to cut, to cut a tree down, which I thought would be a, a basic thing that I could have picked up from today's meeting, and then decide that kind of stuff. I, and we're running out of time. I like the balanced approach, but I couldn't recommend a plan where I didn't know if it was going to cost 2 million or 4 million. And I don't with this. Sorry, Randy, for the time?
Well, you know, it's my take on this, that there isn't enough comfort with the knowledge that we have to go ahead and endorse anything at this meeting tonight. Does that sound reasonable? So my recommendation, or what I would ask for, is somebody to make a motion to table this, come back after we have more economic detail, give the Alderman, who didn't get a chance to read, what, by the way, was a really well-written, very, actually, for reading about bugs, it was a very readable thing. And you learn a lot, and there is a lot of information that people were asking questions about that's actually in that document. But it's clear that we all don't know enough to come out and support this. So my feeling is, I'd like to see this tabled and brought back up at, at another meeting when we have a little more of the economic information in which to make an intelligent decision. And I'd also like to have some knowledge of, of the status and, and volume of trees in other public lands. I just think it's kind of premature to do this. I mean, I think in the short run, adopting this approach makes sense, but I'm not so sure that adopting a 10-year program with the knowledge that we have right now, I couldn't do it.
Well, and I think, just to clarify, and we'll wrap up a couple of things, is that our intent really is to start the, the approach for dealing with the street trees, which we do have the inventory done, and getting, I guess, you know, some traction in how we want to approach that, and continuing to move that forward. And that was really the intent with the C I P for, what we were asking for up there was just for the street trees. We clearly need to continue our inventorying efforts, which would really be our next step on all those public properties. And that, that will allow us to have, you know, really accurate data in which to get the financial projections for that next component. And that's why we felt by the time we get to discussion time later this summer, going into the C I P for fiscal year 15, we'll be able to add into that overall cost component, that element of it as well. And then the, the third thing I just wanted to mention, and in the Dropbox, and again, I apologize that, you know, you didn't realize you had that, it is divided into two completely separate components. One is the Resident Guide, which has a lot of resources that we put together to assist our residents with a whole variety of things, of tree options and that kind of thing, that, which we had indicated, we want to cull that down and come up with a more concise, if you want to call it, executive approach to it. And then they have all the kinds of different resources, and we'll build into it some of the things like George has mentioned, as far as, you know, the recommended companies potentially to look at working with, and some of the things Peter shared with you that we can offer them. The second component is the detailed resource guide. And in that, you will find the 10-year breakdown detailed cost for all the different components of a removal, treatment, and replanting that was based on an outsourced approach. So I hope when you do look at that, let us know if you have those kinds of questions, so we can continue to evolve our information and make sure we can answer those questions for you. And we'll be happy to bring this back. You know, we do have time yet. It's in the C I P, so it's, it's something that, you know, we can continue to, to leave the placeholder, if you will, and in there while we continue the dialogue. So that's no problem. So, thank you.
I have actually one last question, not to prolong this, but there's a memo here that talks about the Resident Guide. And then there's the Davy package, which I couldn't, if I didn't see the Resident Guide in there, maybe it's in there, I just, I mean, I was just-
It's, it's one large document divided into two sections for you. So it starts with the Davy information, and it goes into the Resident Guide, so-
Oh, okay.
So I guess we're all learning with the Dropbox and making sure we communicate that efficiently.
Normally, these are page 65 and 66 of our, of our packet.
Yeah.
They just follow inside the packet. I've never-
We sent these out to you beforehand because of the volume of the document, in hopes that, you know, you'd have a chance to digest it before the meeting.
Yeah.
But clearly, we'll have to make sure it's brought to your attention more clearly.
The cover memo just, you know, was, gave you an overview that said, you know, the Dropbox, these larger documents are in your Dropbox. So we apologize for that confusion.
That's good. We'll make sure that for your March 18th meeting, we try to come back with some more of the detailed information. Maybe we can find out some more with respect to the, the health aspects of the, of the proposed chemicals, the implications that you raised initially. And we'll show you some different scenarios about taking all the trees down, not treating anything with chemicals, what that implication would be, as well as the proposed option four that's in the packet.
Okay, and there's no requirement for us to vote on anything tonight, correct?
No.
Okay. Should we take a few minutes for public comment, if there is any? Name an address, please.
My name is Rami Lopat, and I live at 410 East Woodland Road. I just wanted to come over, and I have not had the, the time to read this plan, but I, I would really endorse moving ahead with option three, the combination of treatment and, and replacement and cutting down the trees. I've been a proponent of that for a long, long time here. It gives you the ability to, to plan and replace those trees. And I think that we may have little, under, we may have understated the, the benefit of keeping those trees up and beautifying our town. Can you imagine taking down all the trees, all the ash trees in front of the Deer Path Middle School? Along Deer Path at Lake Road, it's all ash trees. Along McKinley, all ash trees of great and enormous size. It would be a devastating blow to the, to the economy and to the, to the look of our town. And that's just replicated across our community. As to homeownership, I can, I can run all those numbers. I've had the benefit of, of doing that in my own, on my own property, both here in Lake Forest and at a farm that I own. And, and I've found that treating some of the trees is highly cost-effective, that it, it would take me, it takes me 15 years, and I've got the payback on using triage on my, my large trees in Lake Forest, because they are so large and so complicated to take down. They're within five feet of my garage. Very expensive job to bring them down. I've been treating them for several years, every two years. It's about 75 bucks compared to taking them down at $900. So there's a good payback for me to prolong the agony. At our farm, where they're in the woods and in fields, they're, they're large trees, some of them. And as a matter of fact, Davy gave me a price, and they're about $500 a tree to bring down. I'm not treating them. They're coming down. I don't have $6,000 hanging out, but I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to find it somehow. So, so it is a trick, Alderman, to, to figure out just what to do in your yard, but that[1716.00] but that combination of, of cutting and treatment is, is cost-effective and gives us time to plan ahead. So I would, um, I would urge you to go ahead with treatment, and it is safe and effective. Triage, for example, is two ounces, two ounces injected into the tree, um, in, um, drenching the trees. Um, yeah, I think there's a concern there. Um, but it's limited, it's a limited amount of chemical. Yeah, it, it adds up, but it's the chemotherapy treatment that I don't think we have much of a choice on. And Davie, by the way, has, um, um, a tag system that they're putting on the trees so that you can tell that that tree has been treated and when it was treated, and I hope that, that we do that in Lake Forest. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, I'm Steve Hill. I live at, uh, 90 West Sunny Circle Road, and I'm a member of the, uh, Park Advisory Board, who's been through this, uh, plan in fairly, uh, significant detail. Um, I have a great deal of respect for the issues that you all have raised today. Um, I would just say two things. Uh, one is, um, and, and this is echoing Ms. Lopat's comments, I think the park board, uh, placed a lot of value on these trees and on, uh, you know, the, the, the beauty and other, uh, you know, enhancements that they bring to the community. Um, and so, a, a, a gradual phase-out for both economic reasons and aesthetic reasons felt right to us, which is why you're, you're, actually, that's what the Park and Rec Department recommended, and the board, uh, agreed with. The second point I guess I want to make is, I actually have been in the pest control business for a long time, and know something about the, uh, specifics around, around amitocloprid, uh, which is the, uh, the drench that's been mentioned that, uh, would, would be made available to the residents. Um, and without going into a, a long, um, advocacy of it, I would say that it is a relatively new product. Uh, it has a new registration, newer registration with the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, it is a, a product that is bound up in the soil, so if the soil has a lot of organic matter in it, which our soils tend to, in other words, it's not sand, it's, uh, you know, a, a loamy, uh, soil we have here, that, that would tend to get bound up, uh, in the soil. So what doesn't get, um, systemically drawn into the tree, which is the, the way the product works, it goes into the system of the tree and protects it, um, actually goes into, into the ground and gets bound up, and then turns into inert matter. So that's the way that product works. Um, I would encourage you to read about it, uh, because of all of the chemical options, and Lord knows, we need less of those. I completely agree with you, uh, when you say that. This one's probably, uh, one of the better ones. So.
Any more? Okay, then we look for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to take five minutes?